Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May fourteenth, twenty twenty four Town Council meeting. I would ask that we stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance.
States of America.
At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on everything happening. Not only in our country, but in the world as a whole. Thank you. I have to announce that this meeting is being audio and video recorded by Elka. And I have to ask if anyone in the audience is recording the meeting, and if so, if you'd state your name for the record. Hearing none. Public comments. Genie, if anyone signed up for public comment?
No one has, nope.
Don, do you see anyone on? Okay, council comments. Counselors, anything interesting? Any comments? So a couple of comments from the Chair. One, we know. We have a meeting on May twenty eighth, correct, Genie? And that will, we're trying to hold that as much as possible to just our budget here. That's where we will hold a public hearing. And we will discuss the proposed budget along with the capital plan. And possibly approve it at that time. The other thing I wanted to mention is gardeners at the Brown Farm have all their plants in, most of them. We were able to get it rototilled early for them so that they got a almost two week ahead of time head start on it. If you remember, that's. One of the gardens up there is all the vegetables are donated here to the senior center. Last year was an off year with all the rain. This year they're hoping for a lot more. Fruit trees that were donated or funded through the CPC funding have all come in. I just have to plant them. So I am hopeful to be up there this weekend to get all our fruit trees planted. And I was able to purchase some blueberry bushes to also go in up there. So hopefully at the next thing, I will be saying, hey, guess what? All our fruit is in. With that, town manager's report. It's two pages.
Well, you got a public hearing at six fifteen. I gotta get you there. Evening. Good evening, everybody. So we'll start with the budget, I guess. Kim and I have been meeting with the Financial Oversight Committee. Every Friday, basically since our last meeting, with the exception of Thursday last week. The meetings have actually been very productive and beneficial, not only obviously for the Oversight Committee to sort of go through the whole budget. But their comments to us on how it's presented and some of our our thought process. And and just comments on how we can sort of make this a little easier for everybody to digest and understand. As we move forward here next year and and years beyond. So we're we're we still have some work to do, but we're we're well on our way and things have been going great. Ryan Quimby and I have been meeting with the team at Westfield Gas and Electric almost every week as well. Their their fieldwork is in the QA QC process right now. And we're expecting a finalized designed end of the month, beginning of next month. So that's moving along swiftly. The Center Town District Steering Committee had another public event, May eighth. To garner interest and public comment for the Center Town District. The event was held at Graham Central Station and was well attended despite the freak thunderstorm that we got about fifteen minutes before. Started. So the next engagement is Monday, May twentieth, here at the COA at six P M. To sort of have more of a workshop feel to get gather more input from and ideas and opinions from. Our residents, you know, we're we're trying to trying to craft the district for for all. And the only way we can do that is to really have constructive conversations with. The the members of our community. So if you have time, come out Monday, May twentieth at six. We'd like to have a constructive conversation about where 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 people want to see this go. We are pleased to announce our newest team member, team member, Rob Ochilla. He's been hired as the new planning director for the town of East Long Meadow. We are excited to have him join us. He comes to us from the town of Am Amherst, where he's the town, well, town planner. His first day is May twentieth also, so we'll throw him right into the public forum for the Center Town District. Hopefully he shows up on the twenty first. If you're in Town Hall, stop by the planning department and say hello and welcome him. The new high school project remains on schedule as we move through design development. MSBA has reviewed that submittal and comments have been addressed. We cleared two hurdles in the process. The notice of intent was approved by the Conservation Commission on April twenty fourth. And site plan approval was granted by Planning Board on May seventh. So we anticipate no no stalls in terms of permitting and, you know. Allowing Fontaine to be on site when they want to be on site so we can stay on schedule. So that's gonna keep us right around. I know there, when the bell rings on on the last day of school, they'll probably be in the parking lot waiting for everybody to leave. East Long Meadow Public Public Library is working on their five-year strategic plan. The plan will set the mission and vision of future goals for the public library. We had a informational session, I guess it was three Saturdays ago. At the library, members of the public. Chief was there, a lot of lot of department members were there, town town employees, I mean. So thanks to our library staff and our director, Katie. They really do work hard on making our library a fantastic place to be, and they continue to do so. The Council on Aging kicked off its three-year rolling strategic plan. There's a lot of strategic action going on in town. By sharing this year's goals with the community through an interactive trivia game on April twenty fourth, that was fun. The plan is a result of input from community members, board members, town employees and volunteers. As you know, here at COA, we have plenty of volunteers. Actually, on that same day, we received our new ADA van. That was the result of a budget earmark from the state. As well as supplemental funding from the Town Council, so we are all very thankful for that. That's outside in the parking lot. Legislators will be here on May twentieth. I guess May twentieth is gonna be a big day. For photo and check presentation, so please be here if you can. I'm also pleased to announce that the town of East Long Meadow has been awarded two hundred and two thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. For various projects from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission's Community Mitigation Fund. The fund was set up to help surrounding communities with any and all impacts brought about by the MGM Casino. In the past, this process has been difficult for surrounding communities to get their hands on this money that was sort of earmarked for them. The Gaming Commission changed the process into more of a block grant application. And obviously, we've sort of reaped the benefits this year by having a very competitive application. The money will be spent on projects and planning, public safety, public works and I T. Special thanks to Rebecca, who who ushered in the application process. With input and project ideas from Chief Morissette, Chief Williams, Ryan Quimby, Bruce Fenny. And Aaron Kober, whose input and ideas made this obviously a huge success for us. So we're excited about that. Upcoming events, Center Town Steering, District Steering Committee meeting on May twentieth at COA at six. There's a, the American Legion Memorial Day Ceremony, May twenty seventh at the high school at eleven A M. Coffee with the town manager, June fifth, here at ten thirty. And there is also a community preservation workshop on June fifth here at six P M. So they'll have a whole presentation on community preservation projects, funding. Sort of the whole thing to kind of get everybody up to speed on on where things are, all things community preservation. And that's all I got unless anybody's got any questions.
Counselors, any questions? Community Preservation Workshop. Will Stuart Saginaw be?
He will be. He's actually putting on the presentation. And I I apologize, members from Springfield, Hampden, East Long Meadow, maybe Monson, Long Meadow. Yeah, surrounding, everyone's been invited to kind of sort of. Relay out how things work at community preservation. Projects that are appro, or you know, that are appropriate for this funding and projects that aren't appropriate for this funding. So they expect a big crowd and I think it's one of those things that there's been a lot of gray area. They sort of changed a lot of their chart from from two thousand and twelve till now. And I think, well, you know, a lot of these things go on precedence. And if the rules change in the middle there, precedence gets thrown out the window. So there's, I'm sure there'll be a very large Q and A. And again, like I said, there's a lot, there'll be representatives from a lot of communities here. So hopefully we can get answers on a lot of questions that we still have to sort of. Point this in the right direction to to quite frankly, keep this program alive. Because, you know, there's more and more. State funding that is dwindling. There's just more buckets that all the money has to go in. And CPC is one of them, CPA is one of them that has sort of seen the contribution. Sort of decrease as time goes on here, so.
My only other question is under the two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. That's out of the mitigation fund. Is that something in the future? It has to come in front of the council for us to accept it, like a grant?
Yeah, okay, we will have to accept those funds, sure.
That is a a nice surprise, actually.
Yeah, we we, there was a lot of, a lot of work went into it. We met, we met more than a few times. And like I said, Rebecca did the lion's share of. You know, putting it all together and 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 sort of administering the whole process, so. We're excited. Yeah, there's a lot of cool projects in here. We got the part of the next tip project on the capital plan is. Keep going down North Main and one of the components is a road safety audit, which we got grant money for. With this stuff. Some more, some more roadway safety things. There's a sidewalk design component, traffic cameras. Wants to do a mutual aid fire pre-plan with surrounding communities. So we kind of know if you get called in on mutual aid, where's what and, you know, how to handle other communities. Radar, speed signs. I know most of our issues with traffic, although they have different names. Most are caused by speed. I would say all, whether it's sight distance or crosswalks or. Whatever complaints there are on the roadways, it's because people are not observing the speed limit. Ergo, they don't have time to stop at a stop sign or a crosswalk, or they're going too fast in a curve. So we've, that's, most of the comments I hear about roadway safety from our community members are about speed. So that was sort of a priority to get those signs up and around town.
Thank you.
How we do.
And Rebecca, thank you for your effort on that. That's a great accomplishment. Very well, actually. Good job, Tom. Number six, communications, correspondence and announcements. I'll start with an announcement. All votes tonight of the council will be by roll call. And then I have a letter which was submitted to the town of East Long Meadow. Attention Debbie House, Assistant Town Manager from Mayberry Material Handling. I will read it. Maybe Mayberry Material Handling will be holding our monthly cruise events again this year. In the months of May, June, July, August and September. At Mayberry Material Handling, ninety Denzil Road. The actual dates are the following. Tuesday, May twenty first, Tuesday, June eighteenth, Tuesday, July sixteenth. Tuesday, August twentieth. September is a date to be determined. Donardo's Restaurant will be preparing and serving the food. Marco Donardo has the license and will secure the permits. We will be accepting donations for the various events. Thank you, John Mayberry. I know in the past, over the past few years, he's been doing this and it's been an extreme success. And I know they've been donating to a lot of different causes, which is wonderful. And anything we can do to help to announce it is awesome. Those are the only announcements and correspondence I've received, so we're gonna move on to number seven, public hearing. Hearing for fired first reading. For the proposed bylaw amendment of chapter one sixty dash four. For the assessors' oath of office certification. Council members are Anna Jones, Matt Boucher, Ralph Page, Marilyn Richard, Connor O'Shea. On Zoom is John Torsa and Kathy Hill. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on May fourteen, twenty twenty four. At six fifteen P M. In the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street. For the purpose of addressing a proposed bylaw amendment of chapter one sixty, Board of Assessors. Subsection one sixty dash four, oath of office, semicolon certification. This bylaw amendment will change the amount of time assessors must take the oath of office from within two years of their appointment. To within one, to within one year of their appointment to comply with the Division of Local Services standards. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar with the below length. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the town clerk's office. For the council, Jean R. Quagletti, Town Clerk of the Council. And I mentioned to Ralph, actually, our assessor Diane Bishop brought up that legal notice reads that the. It changes the amount of time the assessors must take the oath of office from within two years to one, but it's the amount of time they have to take their certification. So while it's not accurate in the legal notice, it's accurate in the. Bylaw amendment that was on the website in our office.
Counselor O'Shea, would you like to read the proposed bylaw amendment?
Sure. Aside from the purpose and rationale, am I just reading the change or the whole thing?
I think it's just the change we have to read. The bylaw already exists and we're just changing one little section, so.
So the purpose for the proposed bylaw amendment to section one sixty dash four oath of office certification. For the Bureau of Municipal Finance Law, informational guideline release, I G R. Number twenty-two dash fifteen attached. Established minimum qualification standards assessors must meet to qualify to perform the duties of their office. It's been changed from within two years of appointment to within one year of appointment. So then the change is under chapter one sixty, Board of Assessors, section one sixty dash four oath of office certification. The last sentence is changed from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services Assessment Administration Course one oh one. Must be taken by all appointed assessors within two years of appointment to within one year of appointment.
Great, thank you. Applicant. So usually at this time, we have applicant come up and just say a couple of words. Is there anyone here?
Like to speak? I may. So there was a. Bureau of Municipal Finance Law guideline release number twenty-two dash fifteen. That basically changed that provision from two years to one. So the oath of office has to happen before you do anything on the Board of Assessing. So that that won't change. It's specifically, the guideline to this was so that the course had to be taken within one year instead of two, which was allowed. Which is why our bylaw was written with a two, two-year requirement was because that was the statute. And they've changed it to one. So we're just getting in line with general law.
Pretty straightforward. So this is a public hearing. At this time, I will open this up to the public. And if anyone would like to come up and speak for or against this proposed bylaw change, please come forwards. Don, do you see anyone online? Okay, having no one from there to do that. So this is the first reading, right, Genie? So having this, I'm just gonna close the public input portion for now. And I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to June eleventh.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for a second reading for the proposed bylaw amendment of chapter. One sixty Board of Assessors, one sixty dash four oath of office certification to June eleventh, twenty twenty four. At six fifteen P M.
Perfect, having a motion made and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Is there any other input from the council? Hearing none. Anna? Matt?
Yes, I am a yes. Marilyn?
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, this is continued. For a second reading. Successful. Okay, licensing matters. A one-day liquor license for East Village Tavern. Would someone like to make a motion? Come on forwards.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the East Village Tavern, for the East Long Meadow Rotary Club, Fourth of July Carnival Beer Tent. June twenty eighth, June twenty ninth, June thirtieth, July first, July second and July third, twenty twenty four. From six to eleven P M. And July fourth, twenty twenty four, from eleven A M. to four P.
Is there a second? And then then we'll open it up. Have an emotion made in seconded. Further discussion. Welcome. Wonderful, thank you. So you are going to be doing all the alcohol service at the carnival?
Home to a second year.
So, so first year successful and you.
I mean, I. You'd have a protest, so we didn't bring it back.
It was it was a great job and, like I said.
I mean, I've I've ran multiple large-scale events, St. Patrick's Days. And I never experienced anything like that with a change of weather and amount that our staff had to pivot and set up tents in the rain and. Deal with the weather and I work closely with the Rotary Club at the same time. We're simultaneously, you know, trying to keep in contact with, you know, like. What was going on at the high school with the weather, you know, with just the fireworks and, you know, having to light them off early and everything too. So I mean, that was a first.
Welcome to East Long Meadow. It seems like every year, right around the carnival time, we either get rain or storms or something.
Can't predict the weather.
Any other counselors have any questions, input thoughts?
I just wanna say thank you for coming again.
I see a town. I mean, I'm in the next town over. My wife and I, Jessica, this is my wife, Jessie. Well, hasn't met her yet. We work very hard inside the business. She's there every Friday since we first took over. Very long behind-the-scenes hours and then, you know, hours of working inside the business and we love the town, we love the people and being a part of the town.
Genie, I should probably ask for for names for the record.
Yes, names and addresses.
John Sullivan, twenty-three Spring House Road, Hampden, Mass.
Jessica Sullivan, twenty-three Spring House Road, Hampden, Mass.
Thank you. Okay, have an emotion on the floor and seconded. This is a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes, I am a yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Congratulations, she got it again. Thank you. I much appreciate everything. Next up is a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostle Church. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Saint Paul the Apostle Church, two thirty-five Dwight Road. For a parish maintenance and activities fundraising event, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, six to eleven P M.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion on it? Okay, hearing none. Again, a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
I'm a yes.
Great, that is approved. Thank you. Next up is a one-day entertainment license for Country Development Corporation. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve a one-day entertainment license for Country Development Corporation. Thirty-three Harkness Avenue for the class of nineteen seventy-four East Long Meadow High School Class Reunion. For September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from six to eight P M.
I'm in a second town.
Motion made in seconded. Further discussion. So this is a unique venue for a high school class reunion. Genie, I believe you said it's gonna be like in outside courtyard area of this.
Going to be near Peppa's and the overhang where Murphy's Nutrition is. Just for a couple of hours, I guess it's a casual gathering of the classmates and two of the classmates play an instrument.
And was that Carl's?
Carl Perella, the applicant for the, is the property owner and.
And he's the.
Class of seventy-four.
So if you're wondering at thirty-three Harkness Ave, if we have a new venue, we do not. But it seems to fit and I think it would be a good location for him and he seems to think so. Any other impact? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt? Yes, I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor? Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. We're on to a for entertainment license for brew practitioners. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve an inter license for brew practitioners, forty-five Baldwin Street. With conditions as outlined in their special permit.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Further discussion. So, Genie, if I'm correct, it's a special permit talks about amplified. Music outside is not allowed.
Right, so I I attached their unapproved minutes from the Planning Board meeting where they appeared, the applicants appeared. And I highlighted the section where.
She's here.
Okay. Want to talk to the applicant?
Sure.
How are you tonight?
I'm wonderful. Thank you for asking. How are you?
Very well, thank you. So entertainment license, we're putting it in with the same conditions as your special permit. You've already been through the planning board and I believe they basically said no amplified music outside. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And in.
Nothing after ten either.
And nothing after ten o'clock.
That's correct.
And was there any other thoughts that you want to share with us as far as what type of entertainment you're looking at?
So we did have that discussion with the planning board, actually, and I'm not able to say what type. And the the risk of purposely discriminating against other types. I mean, I can, maybe if you were to ask a specific question, it's something that you did not want, I can say whether or not. But I I just don't want, and I apologize, I just want to qualify that statement with it. I am a labor and employment attorney. And so as soon as you start listing things off, then you, I just don't want to discriminate against anyone at a public hearing. So maybe if there were some restrictions, we can talk about what I might leave out. But I just don't really want to start ticking things off of what I will have.
So, Genie, what does an entertainment license allow? So, Jeannie, what does an entertainment license allow for and not? Does it allow for um?
It does not allow for, it, it listed, does not allow for it on the application, some seconds age of your packet. And it's exposing body parts, basically.
Well, that, that, that's my first, so.
That has to be in every application per mass general law, so that's, you know.
So those are not allowed.
That's not.
So that, under the application, there's certain things that are not allowed.
Right, but and then they
Yes.
Could be dance exhibition, cabarets, public shows. On the application, it says occasional acoustic bands to provide entertainment for patrons, open mic night maybe, no heavy metal or distasteful music. Is that right, Tanzy, that's on your application?
Yes, um. But, and I'm, I wanna fall short, I don't know who's gonna determine what's distasteful or what's heavy me- metal. But yes, it's not a uh, like a Guar, heavy metal nightclub or anything. It's mostly, you know, just local music. And we will not have any exposed body parts.
So I know certain restaurants and all are limited to the number of performers. What's the board's thought on trying to keep it consistent with uh, what we're doing with restaurants? So I, and
Like, these fellows just got a trial for five.
For five, exactly. I mean, any thoughts for other counselors?
Consistency is important. Um, so I, I would like to um, just for clarification, what do you mean the number of per- of performers, like per band?
E- exactly, so um, with our restaurants and all, we've limited the number of uh, people within the band to five. Um, and that way they have a, you know, ten-piece band playing um, again, hard rock music, which is not
Heavy metal.
Heavy metal, um, again, I'm just trying to get a general feel because, because the application is very open and broad as far as
Right.
It's pretty open-ended, what you're looking for.
So, just, uh, and that's just because of the nature of our venue and, and just to qualify, you know, what it really looks like. So, and, and I don't know if each of you have been, actually been in our venue, it's very small. Um, so, we don't really have the capacity to have like a, a major massive concert or anything. But I will say that the nature of um, open mic, which is normally the, the process of open mic, is a community um, event essentially. It's usually what happens is you get someone up there that runs the open mic and you have community members that come in and wanna play two or three songs. Sometimes they do have like a joint effort, you might have two or three people on the microphone and one person on the guitar and somebody picks up a tambourine. So even though it might be more than five people up there contributing to the music, it's not, i- if you're not looking at, you know, three plugged-in guitars and um, a drum set and a bass. It's um, it usually, and, and I just, and the reason why I even bring that up is because the nature of what we usually had at the brewery in the past, is it really is just a, a small band-type thing. But to limit to the number of people, I, I feel like that it's almost not even, and I, I don't wanna say it's not enforceable, but it, it kind of, it draws a picture of something that doesn't even exist. But I don't wanna limit the community to what they want to have either. And I will point out that we, we aren't a restaurant, and so we don't have to worry about, you know, patrons actually dining and it being too much or something like that. Um, obviously, we will abide by what the community wants and what the board decides. But I just am having a hard time understanding why the, the number of limiting it to five people um, in a brewery um, is, is helpful, I guess. And it maybe helped me understand that.
So a- again, when you started the comment, you said our place is a very small intimate location. I think having eight, nine, ten people in a band playing in that um, does not lead itself to a very small uh, setup. Um, obviously, if you have a, a band with eight or ten people in it, you're gonna be trying to draw a crowd of a very large crowd. Um, again, I don't think we're talking about open mic. Um, you know, on that idea, I think we're, we're looking a paid entertainment is um, I mean, more of my thought.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah, I just didn't want
So I'm gonna ask the coun- for their thoughts because I've been um, overpowering a little bit, so. Connor?
Yeah, I don't really see the need to add any other restrictions to it. I think if it becomes a problem, then we could address it in the future. And there's other things like the occupancy limit that would limit the potential exposure of how out of control something to get.
Okay.
So my understanding is most restaurants that have live music is three, but East Village, you said, is on a trial basis for five?
Yes.
So I wanna do five.
I agree.
And
And I don't think that necessarily prohibits like five people or more than five people going up one at a time, just five all at once, right?
Exactly.
So open mic night, I don't think. One or two people at a time, so you said it for five.
And they have to stop karaoke after five people go.
Exactly.
Exactly.
I think it's only fair.
I mean, I, I think that's the thought, would someone care to make a motion then to say um, that we'll be consistent with the restaurants and allow five?
Live, active?
Yes. Anyone wanna try it?
Five-piece song. Yeah, so.
So this would be to amend the approval of the entertainment
Limiting it to
Exactly.
Five at a, at once. Does that sound right? To prove an entertainment for practitioners.
Band members, I guess is one way to put it.
Performers.
Five-piece.
I would say active performers, right?
Five active performers, no more than five active performers at a time, okay. So I make a motion to approve an entertainment license for brew practitioners busy for Baldwin Street. And we're, we're not, are we including the conditions outlined?
Should.
Right? Yeah, with the conditions outlined in their special permit and also limiting it to no more than five active participating That's good.
Performers. Is there a second? So did I already have a motion on the
Yeah, you did.
So, so your motion right now is to amend it to only allow five active uh, performers?
At a time.
At a time.
No more than five.
So that's an amendment to what we have on the floor. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion uh, for an amendment and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, that's a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor now that has already been uh, made and seconded, it has been amended. Um, so with that, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Um, I would call a roll call to approve the license, the motion as amended. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, Jeannie, did you follow all of that?
Yes.
Cause now it's your job.
It's on a whiteout on our computer.
Okay, that one's done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, have a wonderful evening.
You too. Yeah, and I don't think that will limit them as far as open mic or anything like that.
Honestly, the sixth person hits a tambourine or something. Yo, PD's gonna run in.
That's dancing in the front row.
Okay.
Don't juggle.
Move on to eight B, financial matters. Um, we have the, do we have a motion for the release of uh, money from American Rescue Plan?
I move that we release forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents in unused American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds from previously approved ARPA projects to unassigned ARPA balance. Account five eight five five two two, high school skylights and domes, two thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eight cents. Account five eight five five two four, Maple Shade Elementary School Parking Lot and Playground, thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. Account five eight five five two five, fire, twenty twenty-three Chevy Tahoe, seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. Account five eight five five two six, firefighter bunker gear, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents. Total unused ARPA funds, forty thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'll check it.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Connor?
So these are above and beyond what we already closed out last time. So then we'll have to find a new use and appropriate these shortly.
This four thousand dollars will be in the uh, uh, probably capital plan in two Tuesdays from now.
Perfect.
But it needs to be, again, we run it against the clock, undesignated these things, just trying to stay ahead of it all.
So the Maple Shade Parking Lot and Playground, that was um, completed?
These have all been completed, um, and that's why the money's going back to undesig-
By Maple Shade to see it, so.
Okay.
Um, that's awesome. Okay, we have a motion made seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Consider that money back in our book. Well, actually, a transfer from free cash for prior year's expensive, is there a motion?
I make a motion to transfer two thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents from free cr- free cash for prior year's expenses for police details and a deficit to account two seven zero zero, two one zero dash four nine, zero zero, as presented.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? Um, so I have a, a question. I know when the details go out, um, there's a ten percent um, add-on on top of uh, what the officers get paid for administrative. Where does that administrative money go? How's it used? I would assume that part of the administrative would be for when there's a shortfall and someone doesn't cover their bill. Um, is that accurate?
It's accurate.
And so all that administrative has been used up, I mean, I, I'm looking at, I mean, just one column. Um, six thirty, twenty-three, there's sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Um, brought in, actually sixty-seven thousand, which is over six thousand dollars in administrative. So all of that administrative is used to cover losses, is it used within the department to?
So it all stays in this account? To, to Yeah, so if you, we wouldn't have to do this, so we won't have to anymore, first of all. So this balance has been dragging along for who knows how long, this seven hundred and twelve dollar portion. So this is another counting thing that was found and is now being uh, reconciled on a monthly basis. So that we don't end up with uh, dragging a balance for six, eight years. Uh, and then all the other bills are uncollected, right? So yes, that, the, the administration fee could perhaps offset some of these, but when the amount is too high, it doesn't matter. When the, when you can't collect the bill.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that. I, I mean, like I said, i- it's one of those. Um, I mean, I'm just looking at this for the details, basically one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And if you just took one month of administration, which in that same column, it's over seven thousand dollars for administration, you would think that there would be plenty enough left over to cover the fourteen hundred. Um, I'm just curious, there, there's quite a bit in administration and I'm just curious of where it's all going.
Yep, okay.
If we could get some type of breakdown afterwards on that.
Yep.
I mean, I understand it's obvious that the deficit's been being carried along. Um.
Sure.
Other than that, any questions? Any thoughts? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Um, with no further discussion, this is a roll call vote. Uh, I'm gonna start with Kathy.
Wow, you caught me off guard, yes.
And John?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay. Once in a while, I switch things up. Um, a transfer from free cash to the Cultural Council, is there a motion?
I move to transfer seven thousand five dollars free cash to the Cultural Council account, two five three eight six nine three dash four nine zero zero.
Is there a second?
Yes, me, yes, I second that.
Um, motion made in seconded, further discussion. Tom, would you like to just give a quick overview?
Yes, I would. Um, so this amount specifically uh, is, is sort of two-part. Uh, the first part is um, I was approached by the Cultural Council who were in the midst of planning their third annual uh, Arts Brew Festival uh, for which the previous two years they received grant funding for, uh, which they were unsuccessful for this year. Um, and so we're asking if uh, if, if I could help. Uh, you know, um, Mary's very persuasive. And the second, and the second part of it is sort of, my first meeting with them was the day that they were looking through their, all the requests that they received for events from around town. Um, and I think I read off uh, a bunch of them in my report. Um, but they, 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 they struggled to fund these projects and that. They, they obviously funded multiple projects in two, to the tune of whatever, the eleven thousand, eight hundred dollars they got from the state. But they received additional requests up over sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so, again, I talked about CPC before, the amount of money that is, keeps coming in is slowly dwindling. So the amount of work that they put in uh, to sort of enrich our community um, with, with, I mean, again, the events that, that are put on are, are a lot of them are town departments that were the applicant. But um, it's just sort of enriching and I'll, I'll be quite honest with you, I, I had no clue what the Cultural Council did on July first. And it's not even June yet, and I'm asking you to, to supplement their funding because it's worth it.
So my question under free cash, that goes into their account, it has to be expended this year by June thirtieth, correct?
But it's already, not if it's appropriated, it's good. They have their own account. They'll just
Just making sure that
They'll have to do the
I can come in and saying, hey, we didn't spend it, we need it now for July.
No, they'll, that'll go in their account and they'll, they'll, they do their own accounting, so um, they'll handle all that.
Great. Any other questions?
It's a wonderful event, it's a, you know. We should do it.
I'll just say, having, having been on the Cultural Council before a couple of years ago, that's a great group of people. And I, I think it's, we've, we talked about when I was on there doing an event like this, so it's really great to actually see it in action. Um, and I think it's just a very good use of Um, and I think it's just a very good use of, um, money, town money, uh, to kind of extend kind of that cultural and arts section of the town, um, so.
And would any of you like to come forwards and give the Cultural Council a plug first? Have we done enough for you? And I just, if you could, tell us your name.
John Lee Anasson, I am the Chair of the East Long Meadow Cultural Council.
I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I figure you have an audience, a captive audience. And, um, I know some of the things I've seen that you guys do are just amazing that we don't even realize.
Well, I, I am very grateful for the opportunity, you know, to expose a little more what we actually do. And, and it was very surprising me to find out that people didn't even know we existed, so. Um, and thank you very much for the, the funding. We appreciate it immensely. Um, but the basic function of, of the Cultural Council really is to administer grant applications. We get not a lot, based on the population. I think we got like eleven thousand something dollars, um, last year. And, um, it's applications from, you know, people apply for the grants and we have to determine who to give them to, which isn't easy. We get a whole lot more requests than, than, um, than what we're able to accommodate. Now, did I understand you to say that there's some money in that seventy-five hundred that's gonna?
The way that you guys, the way you do your schedule, you're gonna spend it before you get the next lot, so it doesn't.
So does, I mean, I guess what, what wasn't clear to me, because it's, I mean, honestly, it's more than we asked for, for Arts and Brew. Um, was it to, to fund some of the events that we weren't able to fund, um, in the eleven thousand?
I can leave that, uh, you, I'll leave that up to you. It's going in, into your account and you guys do, if you want to add it to the, to the next year's application process or you want to go back, that, that's entirely up to you.
Awesome. Perfect, thank you. And so, um, the other part of the council is that we are able to apply for special grants to put on festivals, which we have been the recipient of those grants, you know, in the past to put on Arts and Brew, which we do with the brew pub. Um, but this, we were unsuccessful in, in securing the grant, so that's, as was explained. Um, we came, you know, to the town to see if they'd like to help out because it's a really wonderful event and I think, you know, people really enjoyed it. And we actually have plans to even make it even better this time than it was last time.
That sounds great.
I don't know if there's any other questions.
Guys, did you set the date yet?
Well, we're tentatively hoping to do it on August twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Because of the short window that we would have once we found out we actually had the money to do it.
Any questions from the counselors? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Um, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I am a yes. Marilyn? Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward.
Um, the Culture Council thanks you for your support and funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to, um, eight four. Um, a transfer from free cash to the Historical Commission Gift Account. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to transfer one thousand, two hundred dollars from free cash to the Historical Commission Gift Account, two six three zero dash four nine zero zero.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Of course. Would, uh, Tom, would you like to give a little insight into, um, this free cash?
Yes, um, another, uh, uh, another, um, very important group of people, this one I knew about. Um, I'm sorry. Um, the Historical Commission, um, I've been to a few of their meetings. Um, they've literally transformed, um, the historical room in the library. Um, all of our documents are up there. They're in the process of, um, you know, sorting them and while it's already really been all cleaned up, but now they're getting into their project to, to archive these things correctly. Um, so, uh, they had let me know they're at all our events. Um, and they always are in their Historical Commission tent, which, uh, has seen better days. Um, so this money is, um, to get them a new tent so they can continue to do what they do, including go to the Arts and Brew Festival with the Cultural Council. Um, but, uh, I, again, um, the impact that that Historical Commission has had um, on, on the community, um, that not many people know about, I think warrants a, a little support, um, from us.
Is there anyone here that would also like to speak on it? We would appreciate it. Give yourself a little boost here.
I'm being Chair of the Historical Commission. I've been on it for a few years and, um, we're just trying to get out in the community and make ourselves known. People don't really know about us. Uh, we're a little museum on eighty-seven Maple Street. In case any of you have ever seen it.
New sign.
New sign. We just got to sign up and, uh, we're just trying to get out in the community and let people know about us. And, um, we've gone to celebrate East Long Meadow first night. Uh, Library's gonna be doing a, a summer kickoff next month, so we want to set up there. Um, we're gonna do a appraisal night, like, uh, um, Antiques Roadshow here at the Senior Center coming up in a couple, next month or so. Um, so we're just trying to be out in the community. And, um, one of the first things we, one of the events we went to, um, Don actually found that one of the participants left a tent that was broken and he fixed it up for us and we've been using this kind of broken down dilapidated tent for the last two years and it finally just fell apart. And, um, in order to keep going to these events, um, we're looking for a tent. We're unbudgeted, um, we're also part of the town, so fundraising is a little difficult for us because we're not nonprofit, so people tend to be a little leery about giving us money. Um, we're able to make about five hundred dollars a year in donations. Um, so we need help. This is a little bit beyond our, our, our reach, so that's why we're asking for help.
So I do have a follow-up question. This, like Antique Roadshow. Are you letting people bring items in and then they're gonna be appraised?
That's the whole idea.
Going to advertise this because I can see this being a very big event.
Yeah, we're, we're working with Aaron here at the Senior Center. Yeah, um, we're right now working with Aaron at the Senior Center. Um, they've found a group of appraisers in Summers. There's a group of three people that are gonna come here. Um, we're gonna open up from five to eight, I believe it is. Uh, people can come, bring one or two items to have them appraised by these appraisers. And, um, it's our first try at this, so it's, it's been, it's very common. A lot of, a lot of, uh, towns do this. I did some research on it and they're all over the place. So they're very popular events and, um, it's a joint venture between the COA and the Historical Commission. Um, we're gonna set it up here and we're hoping for a good event and hopefully try to raise a little bit of money to do more things, so.
That sounds awesome. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Um, we will do a roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Uh, Matt?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Uh, Kathy?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
You switched it up.
I did.
Thanks, Tom. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for the kind words.
And next we have a transfer from Fire Department Salary Line Items to Non-Salary. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from Fire Department Salary Line Items to Non-Salary Light Items. Fifteen thousand dollar transfer from account zero one, two, two, zero, one, dash, five, one, one, zero. A ten thousand dollar transfer from account zero one, two, two, zero, one, dash, five, one, four, two. A twenty-four thousand dollar, uh, transfer to account zero one, two, two, zero, two, five, four, two, one, and a one thousand dollar, uh, transfer to zero one, two, two, zero, four, five, four, three, zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second down.
Okay. So just for clarification, um, it's twenty-five thousand dollar total from two accounts and going into two different accounts. Um, the money's twenty-four thousand dollars going into one of the accounts and a thousand dollars going into the other account. I know the motion was, uh, a little tough to understand. Um, do we have someone here, uh, chief, come up and just give a quick overview of?
What I tell me this one?
All the, all the repairs.
Well, I, I, I know I talked to Tom about, you know, coming in. You know, he's always good about, you know, I think we got it. But, um, this is, this is something I have never, ever done in my twelve years as Fire Chief. Um, we, we were allowed to move a little bit of money here and there on the non-salary side, back and forth from accounts, just so we can make it through the year. Um, we got crushed this year on some, uh, pretty hefty repairs and actually we're not done yet. Um, and I know we have two fire trucks ordered. Um, the earliest, we're gonna see one is they're telling us March two thousand twenty-five. I don't believe it. Um, and then we have another one that was ordered nine months after that, so we probably won't see that until January twenty-sixth. Even if I ask them, um, they are not, um, they're not, they're not getting realistic dates out of the manufacturers, the, the, uh, our dealers. And, and we're not alone. Every manufacturer's pretty close to the same way. Um, so that brings us where we are now. Um, you guys know, I mean, you, you approved the replacement of two apparatus. Um, one, one hit thirty years old this year and the other one is, uh, twenty-four years old this year. Um, we have some, uh, we had some pump issues on them in our last pump test. Um, that didn't make it safe to keep on the line and, and, and put firefighters at the other end of the hose with that truck. Um, we, we don't use them every day, which is a good thing. But if we did have to use it, I gotta have a truck that's gonna work right and, and, and safe for the, for the guys. Um, it's, um, my budget, you know, we've always consistently increased it a little bit here and there. Um, but, you know, it's forty, we hit, we went through forty thousand dollars in a repair budget fairly quick this year. Um, we had some major expenses that, um, we've never seen before. I, I went through two sets of springs, one rear set on their back of the ladder truck. Um, and one front coil set on, uh, Engine Three, which is our, our newest pumper. And our ladder truck is, is a two thousand seventeen. Um, I've never had to, even in my, my thirty-two years on the Fire Department, we've never had to replace springs that I, that I know of. Um, so, and those were, were pretty, pretty hefty, uh, expenses. Um, you know, I, I, we, we, like, we did forty thousand dollars about, I'm gonna say about ten thousand of its regular stuff, annual service that I expect to do every year, that we have to do every year. And then that would give us thirty thousand dollars left over for repairs. And I kind of lumped the repairs into regular, which is like less than a thousand dollars, then medium, up to twenty-five hundred dollars, large, and then very large. Um, fortunately enough, we've only had, we only had one very large, which was, um, Engine Three. Um, a bunch of crazy stuff with the pump in that truck, it's been years old now, so. Um, they don't, they don't build them like they used to, um, under words of Bobby Hill. Should, we shouldn't, shouldn't buy new fire trucks anymore, but, um, uh, we can't, we can't not buy fire trucks unfortunately, so. Um, we were fortunate. We had some vacancies on the full-time staff, so that, that gave us that opening for the, for the funding. Um, so I think, um, I don't know if it's typed wrong. I, I thought I heard one of the accounts says five, four, two, one.
Fifty-two, forty-one, yeah.
Should be four, fifty-two, forty-one. I thought I heard Kathy say five, four, two, one.
Fifty-two, forty-one.
Should be fifty-two, forty-one.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. Uh, yeah, that's, that's the repair account. And the other ones, it's, it's weird. My, my ambulance fuel account's doing well, but my fire fuel account is, is really tough. And we, we wouldn't make it without a transfer into it, so.
I mean, we all know the cost to repairs is just climbing. And it's even the small things like a muffler, um.
Muffler on a fire truck is two thousand dollars.
What I just picked on my dump truck and couldn't believe it when I looked at it. I'm like, how's that works for the muffler? And that wasn't installed.
It's the, it's, it's the emissions, um, stuff that hurts us too. We had, uh, the DPF filter.
Yep.
Um, was plugged because of an issue with the electronics in the ladder truck. It didn't go through what, but the burn-off process. Um, fortunately enough, Bobby Hill was able to take it off, which is kind of unheard of in this day and age, was able to take it off. There's a, there's a shop locally that actually puts it in a cleaner and burns it. Twenty-four hours later, it was back in, so about a twenty-five dollar bill, as opposed to like a six thousand or a seventy-five hundred dollar bill. So we, you know, he, he does, for, for being a town resident that's got a business, he, he does take care of us and, and does the right thing for us a lot of times.
Yeah, it is. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Do we want to correct the motion to the right account number?
Did you say it wrong? I think she, I think. I may have said it wrong, but it's printed properly. It's five, two, four, one.
Okay.
I thought she said it right when I was following along, so, um, obviously the, the motions have been written out and we're voting to approve it as written. How's that?
Perfect.
Okay, with that being said, we're gonna start with Kathy.
Well, thank you, yes.
John?
I'm a yes as well.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the explanation.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
You around tomorrow?
Always. Yep.
Okay. The big part is getting that from salary to non-salary, so even if the number's wrong, we just move it after the fact. We can do that.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yep. Well, assuming that you have an account listed, you know. Yes, exactly. Okay, we're on to B six. Um, creation municipal, uh, building rental revolving fund. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the creation of a municipal building rental revolving fund established under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section Three, effective for the first fiscal, for the fiscal year, beginning on July first, two thousand twenty-four. Leasing payments received for the space located at three eighty-two North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, will be deposited into the fund and the fund may be utilized for upkeep of the building, including but not limited to custodial costs, utilities, ordinary repairs and maintenance, as well as debt service. The balance in this fund will not be closed to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Connor?
Um, since we had just gone through the revolving fund bylaw at either our last meeting or two meetings before, and is this something that needs to be added to our Article Four Revolving Funds bylaw, listing it as an authorized revolving fund? In addition to?
I believe it should, yes. So we accept this first to create one and then we have to do a bylaw change to put it in.
Point of parliamentary.
At our June meeting, we will have a first reading of a bylaw. Yes, very good catch. Like I said, that's, um, good point. Any other, uh, questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, uh, roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, that was B six. Moving right along, additional funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars from rural roadway funding. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept additional funding in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five dollars from the Rural Roadway Funding Program per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three A.
Uh, second. And a motion made and seconded, um, further discussion? Connor?
Just to clarify.
Go ahead, Kathy.
In the backup information that Jeannie provided, the amount says twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and five, not two hundred and five.
Right.
Good catch. So Marilyn, would you like to?
I'd want to just reread, reread it with the correct number.
I think that would be better, yes.
Is that, is that acceptable?
So do you withdraw second?
I withdraw my second.
And I withdraw my motion.
And we will make a new motion.
One oh five, right?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the additional funding in the amount of twenty eight thousand one hundred and five dollars. From the Rural Roadway Funding Program per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
A second.
Motion made in seconded. How'd we lose a hundred bucks so quick? Seems like every minute costs us.
Plant's open.
Okay. Having a motion made in seconded. Any other discussion?
Question. Does this, Tom, does this money like get earmarked for specific uses or does it just fall into our general road improvement?
Basically, yeah, Chapter ninety eligibility, whatever's, whatever's eligible for Chapter ninety, so it'll just get popped into the, to the balance.
Okay.
So another twenty potholes will get filled.
Maybe fifteen and a half.
Listen, gold.
Sorry, it, it really doesn't. With the cost of asphalt nowadays, but with that being said, any other discussion? This is a roll call vote. I will once again start with Kathy.
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I am a yes. Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of minutes for April ninth. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the April ninth, two thousand twenty four, open session minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, executive session minutes of April ninth. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the April ninth, two thousand twenty four, executive session minutes.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Kathy?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I am a yes. Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, new business. Old business, there is none. New business, the acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty four B. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty four B. To allow trust funds held in the custody of the town treasurer. To be invested under the standards of the Massachusetts Prudent Investor Act of Chapter two oh three C.
Second.
Having a motion made in seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a comment. It sounds like this is a good thing and hopefully it yields us some good returns on some of those funds like Open.
So reading all the backup documents, it sounds like they are still extremely secure. I mean, obviously you worry about when you're investing money because not only can it go up, but it can go down, right? And it sounds like they have quite a few guidelines.
Still, yes.
So is it the guidelines that drives how you operate this or is it the people too that?
Both.
Okay, who will be the people actually making this recommendation or decision?
So inevitably, I would suppose me and you, but Don and Kim and whoever else on the finance team would have sort of put on, they have. We have consultant that we work for and was sort of probably gather information from whoever is president to say. How, how aggressive do you want to be here? And I mean, let's be honest, this is real money and we're gonna be conservative across the board, but. This is just allowing other options for these, these certain accounts.
Right.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
So Tom, I do.
Yeah, Don's not going to the tracker.
I did notice through some of the emails that it states what type of funds. And it talks about the smaller trust funds that we have.
Yes.
It's town beautification, conservation, land acquisition.
Yep.
Is there any chance this council can actually get a list of all of those little accounts that we have? Roughly what's in them. Some of these I've never heard of.
You may. I'm sorry, I started my preparation for this far down the agenda at about four o'clock today. And I knew you were gonna ask that question. Again, as you may, no, a hundred percent.
I, I'm just curious, I mean, I know.
I think you'll find that there's a lot of things that.
Going to accounts and it's like, you know, that existed.
There's a lot of accounts.
Yeah.
We have a lot of accounts and most of the, most of them have been sort of repurposed, but there are still accounts that exist that. We're like, oh my God, when, when did that? When did that? Who started that one? So.
I think there's certain ones, I mean, the first one that popped in town beautification, well, if we have to replace. You know, some of the flags or something for the fourth.
Yeah.
Why, if there's money in that account, that would be something that, yep, we could easily use it also.
Actually, that took place when I was on the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, it did?
And, you know, town beautification, they were responsible for the brick sidewalks, which now are not safe. No, it's true.
Been safe all the time. Yeah, no, you're right.
So, you know, I would think that by the vote of the council, if there was something that came up that we could direct.
Absolutely, yeah. I know.
Thank you.
Yep, you got it.
So we have a motion on the floor and seconded. Is there any other discussion on it? Hearing none, roll call vote. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I am a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mass General Law is accepted. Authorization of the town manager to sign a five-year extension, contract extension. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign a five-year extension. First Amendment to Town of East Long Meadow Water Supply Agreement. With the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve.
Second.
I'll, I'll make a motion, a second, excuse me.
Thank you, John.
Sorry, it's coming in a little delayed.
No, that's okay. Having a motion made in seconded. Any discussion on it? I, I thank you so much for that reading material. And I appreciate it.
So legal has been through this and other than this legal impediment, there are no other.
With that being said, roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Matt?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, E three. Town manager to sign a copy or lease in excess of three years. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to authorize town manager to sign a copy of lease in excess of three years per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve.
Second.
Having a motion made in seconded. Any other discussion? So the motion is in excess of three years. I'm assuming it's a five-year contract.
Yes, the other option is a, yeah, sixty one.
Okay.
So, and that's only if and only if it's advantageous and obviously the price is advantageous. But we don't have, so we're running into a timeline crunch, obviously with July one. And they have to, we have to get contracts signed. And the problem with the extra two years is you have four and five-year-old equipment for those two years. Now, you're saving a lot of money. But you may end up with some, so Brian, if it's advantageous, we'll do it. If it's, if there's, if we can't get stuff in the contract for them to service those. That equipment more than maybe they normally would for years four and five, then we're gonna stick at three, but. Because of the time crunch, I wanted the option and if, if it's your pleasure, that'd be great.
Not looking at any more than five.
No, no, no.
Well, like I said, it's just with the motion, it basically.
I know. Yeah, and she, you continue, did ask for backup and there isn't a whole lot of backup because like the water one, we had a contract, we don't have one yet, they just opened the RF.
Yep.
And, and now we're gonna sort of negotiate a, a contract here, but. Being already the middle of the May and we need these things up and operational on July one. I don't know when that time's going to be and if we hit right, so.
Do any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
And Kathy? I think you're muted.
I guess I must have touched the wrong button. Yes, yes.
Thank you. So worse.
Okay, next up, I asked for this to be put on a discussion of the town manager's performance review. Believe it or not, one year is coming up extremely quickly. And typically, the council has been behind on this and I would like to keep us up to date. So my thought process would be for the council to ask Tom to do a self-review. And if we have some questions, if you guys want to send them to me to go into a self-review, then I will forward them to him. And have him do a self-review. We can look at that and then we can set up his full review. But I'm just trying to think from the council, do you want to try and give him the questions so that? Maybe by the meeting on the twenty eighth, we can receive that, which is only two weeks. Would he be able to do a self?
Oh, we've got nothing to do between now and then. No, whatever. Yes, I could.
And then my thought is, once we receive the self-review, then our June meeting, we could look to do his full review. Does that timeline sound? Marilyn?
We had discussed this and, and you know, it was the feeling that you might be doing some stuff that we don't really know you should get credit for. And so it's really important, you know, you're here day to day, you know, sunup to sunset and we're not. And so that's why, you know, we were hoping that.
I'm allowed to go home at sunset? No.
And later. Do something so that we would be able to better understand and perhaps evaluate and recognize and approve that sort of thing.
Kathy, John, any input, any thoughts on it?
Just to kind of tackle on with, on Marilyn, Tom had some goals that we agreed on, so when he does the self-assessment. If you could, at the very least, comment on the progress you've made on the goals. In addition to, as Marilyn said, there's no doubt that there are multiple things that have been. Worked on in, in this past twelve months that the public should be aware of as well as the counselors if they're. Not aware of certain things.
Connor?
The only one idea I have, I agree with all of that so far. Some, with the private sector background, some companies will solicit feedback from. Other immediate direct reports, say like our deputy town manager. Do we think that that would be appropriate to get input? From a slightly different perspective since we don't see it day to day?
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with anything, honestly.
So.
How do we do that?
I, I'm not sure.
Trying to. To write, to direct them, to write something nice about me?
You don't know what they're gonna say.
We don't have to.
No, no.
And again, we've often thought about that, but I also think that that would be something that they would have to do directly to us privately.
Thinking now.
Oh, yeah. Because we don't want.
Right. You didn't finish your sentence.
Well, obviously, we don't want any, if someone says something negative, we don't want Tom to. Really? Okay. You're working graveyard shift now.
It's the staying in the lane thing too also, right?
Exactly.
If I may, I think it puts some of the direct reports in an awkward position because you're, you're asking them, even though the information would come. To the council. It just puts them in an awkward position because you're asking them to comment on their boss. Whereas we are the ones who oversee the manager's performance and the hiring and firing of a, of a town manager. Not to suggest that you're getting fired, just quoting the, quoting the charter. I, I don't know that I'd be in favor of that. I think it puts. Our deputy town manager in an awkward spot or the chief, the fire chief or police chief because they report to, to the manager.
Well, I think this is gonna be a two-step process anyways. I think the first thing we do is I will get to, together with Tom, I will submit some. Outline basically of what we're looking for and have them do the self-evaluation that way there, we can all receive that. Before we go forwards to do his full evaluation.
That's fine, and I've been kind of keeping track, not just of the ones that we agreed to, but all the ones that were submitted. Because, you know, some of them got checked off organically and some of them I saw the opportunity and checked them out, you know what I mean? So that shouldn't be a problem.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
I'll just echo kind of quickly from the public sector perspective. I don't know, I, I kind of agree with Kathy, I'd be a little. Maybe uncomfortable with that. I mean, I certainly, you know, maybe open to it, but at, at first I'd have to think about it a little bit more. Because I know I just conducted, we just did performance reviews a few weeks ago, so in a little bit of a different fashion than that.
Okay, any other questions with regards to that topic? So we're gonna move on to action items. I will set up a self-evaluation, some questions and all, if you guys have any. Or if there's certain things you'd like to know about, please email them to me. I will compose them and get them over to Tom. And the next is. Who would be putting the bylaw together for the revolving?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't take too long. We'll, we'll, we'll give you the same, it's either Kim or, or I can do it. It's not. I, we actually can edit.
I would prefer not to.
No, we can do it. We, I, we have, we, we can edit the E code page and print it out red line or underscored in red line, so.
Add in.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's actually easy for us.
And so.
Cool kids table.
The last, last motion would be a motion to adjourn if everyone would like to.
I move.
Excuse me, if I could just ask one other question, it's more procedural, as it relates to the. May twenty eighth meeting, which in fact is the public hearing for our budget, the annual budget. Should there be? Not straight approval of it or follow-up questions and we can't approve it for the June first deadline? Do we have enough time later that week on a Thursday in that event? I just want to make sure everybody else sees it the same way I do.
So me and Genie talked about this and there is enough posting time to get in before the end of the month. It would make things extremely tight, but we can post it for.
Post on the twenty ninth for the thirty first, which is a Friday, but.
Yep, so, so if it doesn't go through, we would have to hold a Friday.
I could also post it in advance and.
And then cancel it.
Yeah. Maybe the following day or Thursday, we can talk about that more.
Yeah, I think that. That would probably be a smart and would be better than a Friday. Most people would rather not a Friday night. I have nothing going on. So with that being said, we would ask you then to post a follow-up meeting for that Thursday if needed.
Right.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Great point.
Yep. Any other thoughts? So the motion to adjourn was made and seconded. Roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
John?
I'm a yes.
Oh. Anna?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.